Casey, you have the minutes in front of you, please?
You can look up on the screen if it's like...
Abby must watch Counter Strike too much. And she spelled four phases, F-A-Z-E-S.
Oh, no. Okay. I never read through these. I plan on you guys reading them.
Counter Strike, phase plan.
Fingers are too fast for the minutes.
Where, which page? Paul, what page is that?
Find that.
That's on, uh, it's like the second page.
On the second page?
Underneath my, underneath my, uh, Commissioner's report.
Okay.
Four phases.
Okay.
And I think there was one, where were the minutes when that?
That's at the top, right under the reading of the minutes, first line.
I'll go ahead and call the minute, or the meeting order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Whatever it may be.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice our.
I still think she just does that to make sure that we do.
Probably does.
What we do.
The first item is the minutes from last meeting. Do I have a motion to approve what the changes?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole. Any other discussion? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those polled, motion carries. Next item is the bills. A motion to approve the bills and payroll unless you have any question.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Nicole makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those polled, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go on to Commissioners' reports. We'll start with Nicole tonight.
I have nothing tonight.
Paul.
Okay, it's gonna be kind of a good week for an EDC side, economic development. They'll be having, Trail County will be having that showcase I mentioned last, last meeting. That's gonna be Wednesday from two to four at the brewery. This is a good time for the city, because they're gonna, they're gonna be inviting developers, contractors, housing investors, future business owners, anybody that is interested in Hillsborough. So we're gonna, we're gonna put all, promote all the things we have. And Casey has nicely been able to put some stuff together of what we do have to offer as a city. So that's, we're gonna share with any potential home builders, contractors, whatever it might be, developers at this meeting from two to four. So if you know of anybody that's a contractor or a developer that would like to come and learn more about what Hillsborough has to offer, this would be a good time to do it. And we're gonna try and have, I'm not sure, I think Casey would try and get over there for a little while, but I'm gonna try and be there for a while if there's any other commissioners that can make it over there. From two to four, there'll be some EDC people there. So it's our opportunity, because everybody's from Trail County, Mayville, Portland, Reynolds, everybody, they all have representatives there. So it's our opportunity to kind of showcase what Hillsborough has to offer. So the better contingent we got, the more people we can grab and, and show them what we have to offer. The Lead Local Course was again rescheduled to April 23rd. Again, this is free training for inspiring leaders in Hillsborough or the rural Hillsborough area. And of course, that's free to anybody, thanks to the Trail EDC and Hillsborough EDC. Uh, I'll kind of give a quick, as you asked last time. It's one day training will help participants feel better prepared to serve as an effective board, council, or committee member, recognize the components of an effective meeting, learn basic parliamentary procedure and how to use it, understand different personality types and how they can work together effectively. That's pretty interesting. Use effective tools when dealing with conflict. So it's usually runs from about nine to four. It's a pretty good, anybody that's looking in the community or even here would like to, that hasn't done it, be a good opportunity to take a day and go and, go and learn a little bit more about how to be on an effective board. On electrical side, it's kind of the same as we've been working on. So I think Casey did get all of our stuff into everybody, so I think they were just waiting on their end, right?
Waiting for...
On DGR and, and other ones. They got all of ours done.
Yes.
So hopefully in the next month or two. I haven't really got a firm date on when, when the rate study will be done. Everybody's kind of waiting on everybody else. So hopefully sooner rather than later, we'll have that information on that side. So, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. John? Jason?
Uh, the thing that I have Sheriff's side, uh, the two dispatchers that were trading are on their own, so our dispatch is full staff now. And, uh, this weekend for the fire department is the fundraiser for them over at the Armory. So if you're out and involved, I think you still have some tickets left. Hope to see you there supporting them.
How much? Tickets?
It's your...
How much?
Fifty?
Fifty dollars, okay? Big time. Okay, I'll give them, I can bring them cash. I don't have credit cards. You have, get them at the hardware store. Okay, cool, cool. You bet, yeah.
Anything else, Jason?
No.
All right, thank you. Um, so I got a call today from East Central. He wasn't able to make it because he's out in Washington DC trying to get some money for some of their projects. But Neil asked, he said, being that uh, they need, kind of need to move forward in order, when the dairy, to be on the dairy, the dairy's timeline, to make sure that they can get the plant up and running. We were holding off on waiting for the electrical rate study to get done so we could find out what we could offer them power at, and they agreed that they didn't get the contract to us. But the biggest thing they want to know is, and have a motion to approve it saying that they would allow, we allow them to build next to their, their water plant next to our with a shared wall to try to save some funds. Just so they can start on the planning side. JR has the original contract that they had written up, but that is changing because of the elec, the electrical was put in there, and we could not agree on that one yet. And they hadn't gotten back a new contract to us yet. But they just want to know, so that they can start on theirs, as if you guys are okay. Or if you don't want to have the shared wall, they could have separate, but they would prefer having a shared wall. So the buildings would be butted up against each other.
Should we take water, lady?
Is this, I'm, I'm, from the assumption of land that they own then?
We own the land.
We own.
So own the land, or are you with a lease for that?
Yep, that's the agreement, the first agreement, but we were waiting on the first agreement until the second agreement was done and...
Basically ninety-nine year easement slash lease, or whatever you want to call it, I can't remember. Same function idea.
So they're trying to just plan their bill, or what are they trying to do?
Correct. So they have to do the plant, they have to, what he said is they, in order to meet the debt, the timeline of the dairy opening in 2027, they need to start, their engineers are saying they, we need to start the process the thirteenth of this month.
If we're waiting on electrical though, do we know it's gonna work?
Well, we were waiting on the rate, not on the cost.
Enough power and stuff like that?
Right. Their original one was they wanted one, they wanted us to have them get one cent over whatever we were paying. And I said, I can't guarantee that, based on if we need to put a power line out or anything else, we can't. We don't know that at this current time, so...
So if we give them this wall, are they gonna come back and still try to negotiate with us on electric too?
They will try to come back, and he said, sit down, but what he had told me today was, is, you know, as long as it's within reason, we'll pay whatever is needed. The reason that they have the one cent, and I don't think they're, they were originally going to do that, and it sounded like they weren't gonna do it on this one, is, um, NODAC allows them to pay, I think it's four cents a kilowatt, but then it's on off-peak, and then they have to run their generator, which they don't plan to have a generator at this one. They want to use ours as well, as the backup generator. Or the generator that's already there.
So I guess my main question is what's in it for Hillsborough?
Zach might be able to answer some, but it's redundancy and...
There's a lot of questions to ask before I can answer any of that to this. Of course, benefits.
I would say, I would say that if that's all they're asking for is can they plan to use our wall if we agreed to the rest of it, if they're just planning?
They're just planning.
That's, I don't see a problem with planning that way. I have, I'm like Zach, I have a lot of questions on, on how this is moving forward, what it's gonna look like. I mean, a lot of questions, so...
I'd question if our generator, figuring out how to build it, I'd wanna look at that.
And I don't know, that was, you know...
Will, will Sharon with the plant, everything cut into Hillsborough's electrical by the grid, or it might cause more blackout or loss of power in different parts of the city?
That's part of what we're waiting on the planning from DGR to give us.
I mean, when you take a big dairy, you know, operation, they're, they're actually using, you know, more than a house.
It's not a dairy operation, it's a water treatment plant. It's not the dairy, it's a water treatment plant.
Okay.
So they need just to know for the approval, why I'm starting to be with her, Casey?
So they can start their planning. They're not gonna build, they just have to get their ball rolling. It doesn't even sound like they would break ground this year, it'd be next year before they would even break ground. But it takes them a year to get everything.
The architects and the groupings together.
Right.
I think it sounds more like the shared wall, not the maintenance or...
Great. Because that's a huge expense that they can save on, as if...
I mean, is there any downside to letting them plant it that way?
I don't foresee it as, I mean... You have to think about it this way.
Hey, I can't hear what they're saying.
We have, uh, we've had a relationship with East Central or Trail Rural Water for a long time. This is just one more step that we are working together, trying to benefit. This plant is not planned just for the dairy itself. I mean, they're planning, this is planned to help Halsted Community and Minnesota and a lot of other communities that are asking for water, so...
Is that Neil Wright about it?
Correct.
Correct. My son's, son, I mean, he's my, my son's, uh...
So this is, so this is just getting them started. You know, we've, technically we've kind of approved going forward, but now this is a little bit more as we, they're asking for a shared wall. If we don't do the shared wall, then the next thing would be, can they build a separate building right next door? Without it.
You have reservations about that? Do you see any issues with that? If they go forward with it, the shared wall?
Not, not if, not as to...
Just less light in your plant.
What's that?
Less light in your plant.
Less light, wow.
It's unnatural light.
If we're gonna do it, a shared wall, I don't, I don't see a...
You don't see a problem with it?
If, no.
Well, I'd make the motion then that they can go ahead with their planning if that's all that's insisting of it this time, and that's the way it is, JR, from what you see?
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second him.
Moved by Paul, seconded by John. Is there any other discussion?
Just want to be clear that that's what we're, that's all it is right now.
Right, that's all it is. There's no written agreement, this is just for their planning. We're wait, we're trying to get some of this flushed out. They want to sit down eventually to go over electrical and all that other, the details, but...
And that, and that's my big thing is, is we want to be good partners, but we want to know. We want to make sure that we're taking the city's best interests and our, to our do, so...
I think there's a lot of discussion to be had, yeah.
Right. And I don't know, there hasn't been any discussion as shared employees or any of that yet, so this is just building of it. This is, I mean, this is a three-year project, just to get it built, so... Okay, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
A yes for me. Motion carries. Uh, next item that I have is if you look, Casey gave you the rough draft of our 2023 audit. Everything looked good on it. Casey seemed happy with it. Um, this will get everything trued up, so that Casey is straight and narrow on the start. There are, is there five? Six. Six findings, and those are the last three pages. The first one, the segregation of duties, that one we have every year, and I don't think we will ever get rid of that one unless we hire about six people in the office. Yep. The next one is material weakness. Um, that's another one, that you're gonna see that all the time with the small. Same thing with, uh, 2023-003, adjustment journal entries. I know that one is, um, I think we've fixed those issues on that one. Same with four, same with five, and then six was the one that I had mentioned to you at the last meeting, where, um, they said the use of our sales tax, but JR had a different, and I would take JR's opinion on that, so...
But the rest of them have the inadequate bank reconciliation, all them?
All of those have been, all those things we've addressed in here before, we've... But you have to remember, this is what was happening before Casey came in, so... So I don't know if you see anything, but as far as I know, that we have talked about the journal entries, we've worked on those and fixed those, the bank reconciliation.
Reconciliations?
Reconciliations. We know that that is happening now. You guys are, otherwise we wouldn't be getting our monthly financial statements. So, um, and then the capital assets records, we are working on those. That's one of the things of the list, it's just not completely done, or it's close, isn't it?
For like inventory and capital assets? It wasn't done that year, but the list was compiled per my probationary duties last year.
Right, so, so it wouldn't have been done in 2023, but it'll be, we should see that one off in 2024, so... And then that one, it should be off the last one too as well. So that's a good thing, that what they're seeing the weaknesses, we're already kind of fixed and moved forward, so that's a good thing. You guys don't have to do anything on this, uh, they just give it a preliminary, and then they'll give us a final one. So unless you guys see anything. If you have any concerns reading through it or looking at it, just let Casey or myself know. But everything else looked okay on it, so... We've come a long ways in the last few years, which is good. And that is all I have. Uh, actually, no, I had one other thing. Steve sent it to me at the last minute, so...
Me too.
I figured I'll just do it now. Steve said he wasn't gonna make the mid, tonight, but he said, so you'll see in the packet, there was an agreement that we had signed off on, or that I had signed off for that last payment. The reason that we did that is the, what we were hoping to get it in before the, the fir, not the furlough, the cutoff of all funds went in. That was why it was signed ahead of time, so that, that last payment, because otherwise USDA was gonna cut it off. But that has been since backtracked, so we're gonna approve that. But it had been approved, those are the, we've already talked about them, we just need to officially approve it. Uh, the Bedeker Drive, Premier Andrew Port will be presented on February 18th. So you guys, he'll be here next meeting to talk about that. And then the five-year master agreement is coming up too, and he'll have that on the February 18th meeting. And that is to, if we want to choose to use, um, AE2S again as our engineering firm. If you guys want to, we can go ahead and approve, oh, that's down there. If you want to do the fund request now, or we can wait until down the line. It's up to you guys.
What difference does it make to do it now or later?
It doesn't, so...
It's already been completed basically, right?
Right.
I don't see why you can't prove it now. And that's the very last payment, right?
It is.
Did I remember correctly?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Jason to approve the last request. Is there any other discussion? And to clarify, this is just using up the rest of the grant funds, this is not any funds coming out of ours, so... If you, if you guys forgot, so... Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
A yes for me. Motion carries. Zach, anything from you guys today?
I don't have anything.
Okay. JR? Casey?
Um, just two quick things. Um, we're starting a transition to Tyler next week. And we'll be using both systems for a while to make sure the bugs aren't gonna be there when we fully transition. Um, and then this, um, this came in today. I didn't expect it, to get it until pre-meeting next week and, or later this month. So we can table this if you'd like. Um, but Public Works put in a request to have a couple copiers, um, one at the water plant and one at the public workshop. With their computers, um, they'd like to have the capability to print off maps and just do a lot of printing, scanning, what have you, go less paper. Um, the initial request between me, Zach, Roy, and Jay was to have, um, a little smaller of a copier that was able to do scanning, printing, color copy, and then the larger copy for maps to be able to communicate better with you guys. Um, the quote that they're giving us for, uh, it's the same unit that we have, except smaller. It only has two drawers for paper, one for regular size and one that's expandable on the bottom. Um, it would be seventy-two ninety-two a month per unit. Um, all copies and prints will be invoiced monthly at point zero one 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 for black and white and point zero six eight three for color.
What is the max size that they, they go up to for printing?
Executive, so eleven by seventeen. So it, um, yeah, like I said, I didn't expect to have this for tonight. Um, so if you'd like me to put it on the agenda for next month, the, or next meeting, the, um, the salesman already is aware of, of that, so...
I did, um, so Casey had mentioned it to me, so I'd said, well, let's get a quote from law first to see. And then I also looked just to see what, if you guys are okay with inkjet printers, we can probably get one for four hundred.
Right.
That would print eleven by seventeen, copy, scan, do all those things. Just depending on how many copies you thought you were gonna do, so...
It didn't, doesn't matter to me all, I just asked for updated printer.
Updated, what, you got a white and white?
What's that? One that's not broke, I guess.
Yeah, they've, they've needed one for a while. And Roy, Roy was pretty passionate about having the larger size paper for electrical, so...
Well, that's why I asked what size, because it depends, is it, you know, printer or is it plotter, you know? Because it's pretty good printing for those plotters, but we do have...
I do, it's, mine's a little different, but yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'd be curious on the, the price of the two, um, copiers, like the MFDNs.
Well, the one that I looked at...
Because those are inkjet.
The one that I had showed Casey. And it's because, yeah, I have one at the school and it works really well. I don't use the fax, but everything else. I don't fax.
But yeah, we can...
They probably want to get a somewhat of an idea of two, how many they think they would, copies they would make, two to figure in that equation or not.
Which...
Whether it would be two hundred copies or two thousand copies.
Oh, this, they're even on sale now. The workforce, the seventy-eight twenty all-in-one is one ninety-nine right now on Amazon.
What's the brand?
Epson.
The Epson.
Does it, does it have the bulk king?
Uh, no.
Is that toner?
Some of them have the bulk king.
That's, that's nice.
That is nice.
I've heard that they do a lot of...
It's, yeah.
This one has a cartridge, and it has extra big cartridges, but it works good. And it prints eleven by seventeen, because that's what I use it for, is maps and stuff.
You want us to put a couple together maybe for you?
Yeah, I said, I, I have a...
Yeah, it depends, you know, if you're gonna print a tonner, you know, not a ton. But one that'll last for quite some time.
But at seventy-two, well, it'd be a hundred and forty dollars a month times.
Right. It makes sense to buy them if they need anything involved.
And if you guys need lots of copies, you could always come over here.
You don't mind visiting the office, you know?
Okay, we'll get some stuff.
They might mind him.
Anything else, Casey?
Nope, that was it.
Okay.
I want this one, do anything with that. Did you get a chance to read that?
It's already ordered.
Okay.
Uh, just so you guys know, um, they had asked for a computer for Ro, for...
Brian.
For Brian, so, uh... Which we had saved money, so I was able to get, uh, a computer similar to what you guys already got. Six bags, um, because I knew some of you guys didn't have bags for the computers, and some new mice for the Commissioners, and it, with our savings that we saved, I think I spent eight hundred bucks. Because we got two hundred and some dollars back in...
Rewards.
Rewards from our, the computers we already got, so... So hopefully we should be good for computers now for a little while, so... But that makes sense if Brian is doing his own kind of stuff to make sure, so...
Wow, I email him, email him too, so it's nice for him, so he can...
Well, they all have email, so...
No, but I mean, that he can put it all on.
Right, yep, so, which you guys are pretty much, everybody's got one, or?
Yeah, he will be. He's not quite yet.
So, okay. Anything else, Paul? Okay. Uh, anything in BC? I don't believe so. Nothing in Old Business? We have a building tax exemption for Sarah Lovis on her new build. Just need a motion to approve that, if you so do.
I'll make a motion to approve that hundred and fifty thousand dollar tax exemption for five years, is it?
Two.
Two years, excuse me.
I will second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole. Any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Motion carries. The Hillsborough Fire and Lease Conflict, hopefully everybody looked at that. That's just because JR is representing both the fire department and us, so as long as you guys are okay with that.
Correct. And I'll speak as to the lease, the draft was included, but it's being reviewed by their other councils. I can't, I can't represent both in the same concept. So there might be some changes coming back, but it's an early draft review if you'd like. But otherwise, it's just a conflict waiver, because I represent them in other matters.
You just like to work a lot, is that the deal?
You know it.
If you saw a prove, do I have a motion to prove? If you so approve, do I have a motion to approve?
Do you foresee any issues with that?
Nope, nothing. Because I'll be drafting lease for the city's best interest, they have it on the council for it. It's just a matter of, that one issue is left to disclose. And if any issue did arise, we can't be the firm for anything. New council steps in. If it was litigating, I should say. I don't foresee any issues because I think we're all on the same page. We don't want to have a 99 year lease, they're going to put a building up there, we'll be dead before we have to worry about it.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Jason makes the motion. Is there a second?
I can second that.
Seconded by Paul. Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any, anything else from the commission tonight? To the midst, man?
I don't think so.
Anybody addressing the commission tonight? Any citizens like to address the commission tonight?
Got one question, and about the dogs, the stray dogs in the area. Has that gone, gone any further than it has as far as, you know, the sheriff's picking them up and maybe putting them for a 72 hour hold, or then the other end to either Fargo or Grand Forks for the stray dog issue?
We're still working on it. We're getting closer, but we're still working on trying to find a house for them.
Yeah. That's insane. It's insane to do that because that's their job. That's not their job is to pick up stray puppies. That's not what they, well, I'm just saying, that is not their job. I just, I hate, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, stray are strange. I told him same, hey, you did that, hey. I had a puppy, I said to you. Why am I told, she's...
That answer your question?
Okay, I'm not feeling it.
Okay.
Fine, I'm sorry, sorry.
Anybody else like to address the commission tonight? Anything else for the good of the order? I have a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
You want to do this?
Nope.